I'm curious. All right, thank you, members of council. That completes the committee reports. It brings us to our item of deferred business. We have one item of deferred business tonight. It is with regards to the South Berry Secondary School. Counselor Ainsworth.
Thank you, worship. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Meade that motion 15G, 187, Section D of General Committee Report dated September 14, 2015, concerning City Council bump-up request for site plan approval of the South Berry Secondary School be adopted. Is that enough? Yeah?
Okay. The motion is printed on the agenda, members of council. The four paragraphs of the motion are printed on the agenda. The deferral motion is that motion 15G, 187, of Section D of the General Committee Report dated September 14, 2015, concerning City Council bump-up request for site plan approval for the secondary, South Berry Secondary School, be adopted. And that was, the original motion is printed on September 14 and deferred, I believe, twice to arrive at tonight. Members of council, I've got a couple of items, really by way of information, that, with your indulgence, I would like to ask a couple of questions of staff so that we can have that information out on the table. I also have a few slides for some pedestrian incident information to present. So what I'd like to do is just present that and then open the floor for comments and questions and discussion. Okay, seeing some nods. The first question I have is for Mr. Naylor. Mr. Naylor, you prepared a memo originally. The memo that was prepared, it's included on the additions tonight, and that is documenting the series of meetings that have occurred on this file in the time that, since the recommendation for denying the site plan was brought forward and council deferred that. We received a letter, as you're aware, on late Friday from the Director of Education and two of the superintendents, which was copied to trustees and raised some concerns with that memo. I understand that there continued to be a difference of opinion with regards to some of these meetings. And you clarified that in an email to council, some of the concerns that were specifically raised by the board in this letter. I would like to just ask you if you could speak to this issue of the discussions surrounding the potential for a joint use library. You had indicated in your email when that was discussed, and perhaps you could just, you know, either read that email or give us the information in response to the specific concerns that were sent in this letter from the board.
Certainly, your worship. I will read from the memo or the email, so I don't miss any of the intent. But the third paragraph, for your reference, council, I'm reading from the third paragraph. "The northern location of the school, including a joint-use library, was also raised and discussed at the meetings on October 9 and 15. During the October 9 meeting, which was the first follow-up meeting, after the city proposed the joint-use library option, a shared library option was included on the agenda, which the school board prepared for that meeting. In addition, the school board representatives provided a detailed review of the shared school-public library in Angus. These were more than a very brief conversation, as the board claims in their letter."
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, there seems to be a difference of opinion regarding the degree to which that was discussed. And I'm not sure that, for council's purpose tonight, there's much use in getting into further detail, although thank you for providing all of the information about what documents were tabled when and all those sorts of things. I think the central issue that remains for council relates to the options that were brought forward, the one which is the preferred option from the board and the option of looking, at least, at a joint-use library that would enable a northern location for the school. And I think something that's gone missing in the back-and-forth of the correspondence here and so forth is the notion that this could be a potential partnership for the city with the school board that could perhaps address some of the concerns around the north location. There may be questions from members of council about that, but the other bit of information, since I said I wanted to sort of just start with information. Don, can I ask you to put up the slides that were prepared here? It was reiterated in the letter from the board on Friday, members of council, and we have received, including in an open letter from the chair, and thank you to the senior staff of the board, the chair and the Berry trustees for attending tonight. I appreciate you coming. The concerns that were raised surrounded safety. It was stated by the board that the city was proposing a site plan that could compromise the safety of the students, which is obviously a concern that we take very, very seriously. In an effort to get to some more information for council's consideration on this issue, I asked our traffic department for data on the number of pedestrian incidents, that is accidents, in the area around the high schools in Berry. So what you're looking at up on the slide here is data that goes back to January 2004. Maybe we can just bring down the lights a little bit. Maybe we can't. Welcome to a brand-new chambers. The data that's up on the screen was provided by our traffic services department. Over the past 12 years, there have been 18 incidents that occurred during school hours on the road, so that excludes the parking lots themselves, within 500 meters of the high schools within the city of Berry. So to be clear, what I asked for was collisions that involved high-school-age students between 14 and 18, collisions that occurred approximately during school hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. -- we extended it a bit, recognizing hours can be different, extracurriculars and everything else. Collisions that occurred on roads, so not stuff in the parking lot, and the example that was given by our traffic folks was a skateboard running into a parked car, and within 500 meters of the school, one-half a kilometer. So over that 12-year period, there've been 18 incidents. And here's the list by school. The data would indicate, first of all, I think over 12 years, those 18 incidents, incidents are relatively infrequent at schools. However, one must not understate the seriousness of them. Obviously, they can involve injuries almost always, and that's a very serious thing. But the pattern is what's sort of interesting. So if we can just go to the next slide. What we then did was to measure the distance from the main entrance of the school to the curb. Now, I should specify here, there are a few instances where that would probably be a little misleading. And an example of that is Romeo de laire. For those of you who know Romeo de laire, the main entrance is a long way back from Essa Road. But the reality is, there's a door right up against the road. So if we were to say, measure to the main entrance on that school, that would be a little misleading. So what we tried to do is the nearest door to the road, you know, a major entrance to the road. This example from Google Maps, it's an amazing tool. This is St. Joseph's, St. Joe's High School. And there's the sort of measurement up at the top there. St. Joe's is obviously on Kundles, and the main entrance is right up by the road. So if we can just go to the next slide. This demonstrates the relationship between the distance between the school doors and the edge of the road and the number of incidents. In red is the trend line. And that being absolutely flat would indicate that the distance from the door to the curb does not have any impact or correlation, anyway, on the number of pedestrian incidents. So you've got a school that had six. It's relatively close to the road. There are others that are much closer. I would note St. Joe's, one of the closest. Berry Central, obviously, has WA Fisher Auditorium right up against the road, but there are also entrances that are well-used by the students to the cafeteria and the main entrance off of Bradford Street. The outlier here, the 200-feet-one that had one incident over the 12-year period, is Innestale. But if we can just go to the next slide. We actually removed, just to take a look at it, Bear Creek and Berry Central to just take a look at what the impact of that would be. And the reason for that is, as we all know, Bear Creek is actually on its own sort of campus setback. And although Red Oak is a road, it was really, I thought, unfair to the notion of, you know, that that school was really close to a road. If you take that out, take Central out, the relationship really doesn't change, although the trend line goes up a little bit. That actually suggests that there are more accidents when the schools are further back. But I would ignore this chart because, although we were taking out the outliers of Bear Creek, which is not on a major road, and Berry Central, which is right up against Bradford, really the message in this, if we can go back to the previous slide, is that there's no apparent relationship in our data between the distance from the school to the road and the number of pedestrian incidents. Just go back two more slides to the raw data on the number of incidents. So for those who know the high schools around the city, you know, we have a real variety of designs here, from brand-new schools or relatively new schools to schools that have been on their current site for an extended period of time. St. Joe's, for example, is right up against Kundles. Kundles is a four-lane arterial. The main entrance literally is onto the sidewalk. They have not had a single pedestrian incident in 12 years, at least none that were recorded through the police and through the city. There are others that are on busy streets that have had a few. But I would note as well Romeo de laire on Essa Road. It's only about sort of three lanes out in front of Romeo de laire, but obviously, speed and volumes are relatively high. I think the takeaway from this, and it's a relatively small sample, I'd be the first to admit, it's 11 schools, data from a 12-year period. But as far as we can tell, using the hard data, there is no safety concern that would be supported by this information. I think, you know, in terms of the discussion that we need to have tonight, our staff, and I'll just provide this by way of maybe opening the floor to discussion, our staff have been engaged in an intensive process. I believe Mr. Naylor indicated six meetings. There was discussion, unfortunately, it seems, with the last exchange here, perhaps the progress that we had hoped for was not as substantial. The core issue of the school's location on the site, it should be clear. The idea of looking at a shared-use library was to enable a potential partnership with the city, and our staff could develop an approach that could involve the city actually partnering on some of the costs for the library. Now whether you, as council, would approve that, whether the Board of Trustees would ultimately approve that, the two major concerns that we have heard expressed from the board, and I take them seriously, are the safety issue and the cost issue. The safety issue, we've looked at the hard data. I would suggest to you, there isn't a lot of evidence in Berry to show that the actual distance back from the street is the determining factor. And why is this important? It's not an aesthetic issue, and maybe I'll save those comments because I'm starting to editorialize. But the second issue, the cost issue, we find ourselves in a situation with an applicant, a school board, who have proceeded with architectural drawings and are now faced with substantial costs to meet the concerns that were expressed by the city from early on in the process. And I don't take that lightly either. That's a reality. We can assign fault or look back through the process, but I accept it's a reality today. However, I was really excited by the notion that there might be a win-win in this, because it's like pulling a rabbit out of a hat, I think, sometimes when we're buried into a very difficult issue, and there might be a creative solution yet that could do something great for the community, overcome the concerns that have been expressed, or at least help address them by the board and move forward together. So I'll stop there, because I'm definitely into editorializing. I'll open the floor for discussion. I'll remind you, it is City Council, so you have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes. And we will need to move from here to considering a further direction to staff, deferral new motion, or consider the motion that's on the floor now. Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Appreciate your non-editorial there, actually. I think you summarized it quite nicely. First and foremost, I think it's important to recognize that council, on more than one occasion, has expressed unanimous support to let the parties go back to the drawing board and try and come up with that win-win that you were talking about. So I think that effort has been made, and goodwill and good intentions have been shown on the parts of all parties, and I think that that's worthy of our consideration. With regard to the data, I was curious, actually, who I'd direct a question to with regard to traffic data, just to put things into a little bit of perspective.
Mr. Friere, I think, Mr. Friere.
So, Mr. Friere, I'm going to be asking you to reach, probably, but the fact of matter is that we're looking at 18 collisions over 12 years. I'm just curious if you have a guesstimate in round numbers of what the actual total count of reported accidents is in the city of Berry on an annual basis. Are we in the thousands? Are we in the...
Your worship and members of council, unfortunately, I wouldn't even hazard a guess on that number at this point, but I would be happy to investigate and provide that to you tomorrow in an email, if that's okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I know I didn't ask you ahead of time. I guess the point is that it's one thing, yes, we're looking, and an argument could be made that one accident's too many. But I certainly appreciate the fact that you did ask for this data, and the data represents over 12 years. It's not 18 accidents, it's 18 accidents over 12 years. And when we put it into perspective with the number of accidents, I mean, the comment is always made, I can get hit, you know, walking, stepping in front of the bus, walking off the curb. The fact is that this is an infinitesimal number that we're looking at, and it does not speak to the fact of whether there's a fatality or whether there's an injury accident. It is specifically data. But, you know, I appreciate the fact that you put the line in there, or that the staff provided the line in there to show the trend. But I think really what it does come down to, though, Mayor Lehman, is the fact that the data does not support the claim. And I realize that this could be viewed as inflammatory, but I think that the original intent and the original concern is the fact that this does come down to money. It does come down to the fact that it is more costly to, according to the report presented by the board, to build and design the school on the north end. This is not about safety. This is not about, my kids are going to be walking to school as well, so I want to make sure that they're in a safe position. But to, for anybody to suggest that the school or that the city would go out of its way to turn a blind eye to safety provisions, I think what we're doing actually indirectly is putting schools closer to a controlled intersection. And when we have a controlled intersection, we have the ability to actually control traffic. When you have 1,000 vehicles or 30, 40 school buses going into a residential area that is buried inside of a neighborhood and not at a controlled intersection, such as a more major artery, I think the opportunity for accidents actually could increase. So I think that we're wiser to take our staff's lead and to follow our staff's direction and recommendations, to keep the schools closer to controlled arteries and access and aggressive points for schools, and to recognize that the data does not support the claim of safety being a chief cause for concern. So I won't, you know, go into it any farther. I think that in the last occasions that we've had to speak, I've certainly made my point clear that I do support staff's recommendation. And I think it's important that we remain consistent, consistent with our message, because we are looking at having tens of thousands of people moving into the south end and to the annex lands. We're going to be taking bear land, and we are going to be creating neighborhoods, and we're going to be creating community down there. And I think it is absolutely vital that we remain consistent with our messaging and with our planning. And for us to even consider, at this one-off time, to veer away from that message and that precedent, I think actually creates a questionable precedent for anybody coming down with a future application. And I would suggest that council does not give an opportunity for that to happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Khan. Counselor McKinn.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I had a whole bunch of notes here to review this, but I think you and Counselor Khan nailed it. So after reviewing this agenda, you know, I definitely talked to as many people as I could. I talked to, obviously, city staff, councilors. I talked to school trustees. I talked to planners. And it reminded me of a story I'd like to share with you. I read a book once, read a book by Abraham Lincoln, it was a bio. And a guy said to him, "If you were to take eight hours to cut this tree down, how would you cut this tree down?" And Abraham looked at the reporter and said, "Well, I'd take four hours to sharpen my blade." And that's what I really think that city staff has done over the past five years, what past council has done, what this new council has done, and what the planning and builders have done. We spent five years planning a neighborhood that's going to be a different kind of neighborhood here in Berry. They had a blank canvas, and they want to have the best neighborhood possible. We've made lots of mistakes here in Berry, and we're going to learn from those mistakes and not repeat those mistakes. So I think, Mayor Lehman, you had an excellent presentation, and I think that Counselor Khan, you, you know, supported that again. And I'm going to vote in favor of city's recommendation to turn down the, sorry, the application, sorry. Thank you.
Counselor McKinn. Thank you. Counselor Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just want to say one thing on the safety aspect, and that was, several years ago, as a council, we asked the school board if they would change their policy about putting elementary schools on collector roads and secondary, or major collector roads, which is, I understand it, the school board policy. And we were told at that point that, no, they prefer to put them there for ease of transportation, getting buses in. We want them to put the schools on neighborhood residential streets. And those are for kids that are about 4 years old to 14 years old. And now to be told by the school board that they're concerned about the safety of high school students on this, it's just, it's hard to believe that they've, you know, there's been some conversion along the way, that they've suddenly seen the light. Certainly, a few years ago, we were told that safety wasn't a concern for elementary school students, so I'm not sure what happened in the last few years. But I just wanted to point out, I guess I'm really hurt by the whole process, is that the school board was the only group we allowed to start planning in the second, in the new, the annexed areas. The only one. Nobody else was allowed to do a single bit of planning. We allowed the school board as a favor to them. We thought, knows that this school is so necessary, we're going to let them go in there and do schools. And then what it's come down to is that, you know, we've spent five years drawing up our plans for those schools, as we've heard, for those areas, as we've heard, there's going to be something different, a different type of development. We're going to put buildings close to the road. And about one hour ago, we passed, not even that, half an hour ago, we passed our crime prevention through environmental design policy, which says, "Natural surveillance is based on the concept of creating clear sightlines and allowing the majority of a site to be visible to the casual observer on or in proximity to the site. Examples of natural surveillance design strategies include locating buildings close to the street with unobstructed views." So within half an hour, we're already talking about, you know, we should make an exception to that. And it's the same thing for the annex lands. We've got these plans in place for what we want the annex lands to look like. The very first people we've allowed to go in there and actually a plan ahead of time have fumbled their noses at this council and said, "We're not going to follow your designs," which is really, it actually is an insult to this council. And I guess all I can say is that apparently, no good deed goes unpunished, because we're paying for the fact that we allowed the school board to go in there first. So I'm not going to support, I'm going to support staff on this. And unfortunately, it's going to go to the OMB, and it's going to delay things further for the students that are waiting to get into that school. But I don't feel any guilt about doing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ward. Counselor Severa.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Actually, I want to thank you for bringing the numbers, because about the accidents and the safety on those schools, I just want to say that I drove for a couple of those sites, because I was really concerned about the safety. That's what the Board of Education was worried about. And I drove through those schools, and I couldn't find the numbers. And I'm glad that you brought the numbers here. I think that if any of us here, we can say we care about the safety of the kids, the safety of the residents of Berry. And I don't think that if you're going to put a dollar sense against safety, for sure, we'll go for safety, which is not in this case here. The case here, I think, the school board missed the boat. The case here, I think they should be worried more to have a place, a school, to be built on time for those kids, instead to come up with safety issues with, I can't see the numbers, which I can read the numbers, I can see doesn't exist. You know, I'll support the staff requests here. I don't think the safety is the premier subject that the school board really care about, because the number shows it's totally, totally misleading. Thank you, Mayor Lehman.
Counselor Press.
Thanks, Mayor Lehman. I had a question, I think, probably to you to lead off, and then a comment. The traffic volumes on the roads, I think there's probably a fair variance there. Is there one or two that are similar to the location that is proposed in traffic volume?
Thank you for the question. I don't have that data offhand, although, Mr. Friere, I would suspect Young Street, Kundles would probably be the two closest. Mr. Friere?
Your worship and members of council, Young Street, the volumes we're looking at, between Young and Ashford, is about 17,000 vehicles. Kundles is about 13,000 vehicles. So that's typical volume.
Compared to what's projected on the...
I think, by memory, Counselor Press, and I really hate to get this wrong, because I know it'll all get criticized if I do, but 15,000, I think, is the projected for today. Down the line, it will be more than that. Why don't we ask staff to follow that up in a subsequent email? I guess the point that I would make on that is, you know, the St. Peters, which is on Young, had the most number of accidents. St. Joe's, which is on Kundles, had none.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lehman. I also appreciate the illustration, I think. I think the challenge for council is, there is some frustration, what we feel was, calling a spade a spade, we feel it's a red herring, the accusation that safety is the issue. But I think if we step back from it and moving forward, and I have no doubt this will end up at the OMB, but had the developer, whether it be a school board or anybody else, come to us with a significant project that was, their obstruction was timing, or their obstruction was money, I think the city would have provided some flexibility. And I think in this application, we have. We've been creative. Mayor Lehman, I know you've worked extensively on the file to try to create flexibility for both parties. So this isn't just that we drafted this plan because it's brand-new and shiny, we had to embrace it and own it. The reality is, is we have provided flexibility in this process, as we do with all, or almost all, development applications, to try to get, you know, the elusive win-win. And I'm not sure whether the cause of safety dollars, timing, I'm not sure what really matters. You've got two different parties in this, and both of us have a job to try to get the best development from our perspective. If you're very lucky, at the end of the day, it serves everybody. Sometimes that's not the case, and you need a third party to decide. Well, I suppose that's the situation we face here tonight. But I think the challenge is, the safety word came out early on, and I know in talking to members of council, everybody, you know, had some ruffled feathers around that, because there's nothing we spend as councilors more time on than safety in our wards and in our communities. So to have the suggestion that we are somehow not concerned about that, I think, was very frustrating for everybody, not to speak for everybody, but certainly from my perspective. And the other issues, if they were part and parcel of the equation, I think they would have been dealt with and weighted accordingly. If we could have facilitated this, we would have, we've attempted to. And we sit here tonight at loggerheads. I think our city staff have done an admirable job of trying to be creative, and I'm sure from the school board's perspective, they feel the same thing about their staff. So here, tonight, we end up, we can't broker a deal, which is frustrating. But at this point, I'm fully prepared to support the staff position. But I remain hopeful that the students will not be the ones penalized, that we will find a resolution, and we will do it in a reasonable amount of time, that we can make the best of the situation. So those are my comments, Mayor Lehman.
So I'm aware that once members of council start eulogizing a process, it's typically over. And I recognize you're, hearing the comments around the table, quite prepared to vote this down tonight, and we're off to the OMB. I guess before that happens, I mean, it may sound odd for me to be the one saying this, but I want to ask whether or not, at least to our CAO, Ms. Ladd, who participated in at least part of this process personally, and I guess... at least part of this process personally, and I guess Mr. Naylor as well, I am actually reluctant to see us vote this down tonight, only because, if nothing else, I feel like the correspondence that was sent by the board, and then the response we received from Mr. Naylor today, would suggest that an option which I personally feel is viable has not been given its due consideration. Now, after the exchange of correspondence that I've just seen, I'm afraid we've taken a couple of steps backwards, again, which is very, very frustrating, to see this letter and to see the kind of accusations that are in there and so forth. But all of that notwithstanding, nobody, nobody wants this to ultimately delay the school. The point in this is actually to get the school, and as strange as it is to say that, the school is needed. I've said that from the very beginning. The school is absolutely needed, but for the city to compromise, as eloquently expressed by Counsel Ward and others, on a position that we have had for more than a year, which is an important position, and just as you say, Counsel Ward, you know, earlier tonight, we passed SEPTED design principles, which speak exactly to this, to the safety that is created by putting buildings closer to the street, and, you know, this is why, this is not some aesthetic issue of how, where we think the building would look nice. And these are very real fundamental planning principles that are basic to the entire annexed lands, and the fact that we are proceeding, Counsel Ward's absolutely correct, we know the school is needed, so we're going through a process for the school board that we are not allowing anybody else to go through, to develop in the annexed lands. We're going to talk about temporary servicing, we're providing a road, a project, all kinds of work here to enable a partnership that would actually allow the school to be built before anything else. But all of it will be delayed by many, many months, if not years, if this goes off to the OMB. And while I know you're quite prepared to do that tonight, as am I, I have to ask the question whether or not there is a willingness from our staff, or if they believe there is at least any further benefit in proceeding with another discussion on the proposed library option, which would see the school move to the north end of the site. I recognize council is turning down the other option that was outlined in the memo by virtue of not being willing to move in a different direction, but I guess I'll ask Ms. Ladd.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a difficult answer for me, or difficult question for me to answer on my own, because as you know, it takes two to come to an agreement. The school board, I think, has made it clear, at least in my opinion, that they would certainly entertain talking to the city about a joint library. However, they would not be prepared to look at moving the school to the north end just because we were prepared to share potentially in a library. So I think, and if I can recall the letter from the board staff, it reiterated that they'd certainly be willing to talk about a shared library, but it would be at the south end of the site. I'm not sure, frankly, if the... I mean, I'm always the one who never likes to close down a conversation. I'm just not sure, and perhaps this is a question that can also be asked and are directed to the school board staff that are present tonight, whether we have, if there's any benefit in continuing the discussions about moving the school to the north end, regardless of we might, what we might be able to offer as a city. I think as Mr. Naylor said in his memo, we suggested that we could share in a library, which would hopefully offset some of the costs of moving the school to the north end, and we also talked about potentially joint use agreement whereby the city proposed that perhaps we could also assist in the maintenance of the sports field. So we tried to look at ways that we could help the school board with the cost issue. I think the safety issue remained paramount, and that's really what the board staff thought was not being addressed by the library proposal.
Mr. Naylor, anything you want to add?
Your worship, through the council, yes, I would share the comments Ms. Ladd just made, and the, I would note that the letter that we did receive from the board on Friday, and I believe Ms. Ladd indicated, that the board would certainly entertain a partnership of this nature, but not on a north side. Saying that, I think that if the city could suggest a partnership with a frame of reference with respect to the cost sharing that we might be able to do on a preliminary draft basis, that may assist matters. But without that information, I don't think that there's, and again, I don't want to speak for the board, but I don't think that they would be willing to come to the table without any new information provided.
So thanks, Mr. Naylor. The correspondence we received at the end of the day on Friday indicated, Simcoe County District School Board, and I'm reading from the letter here, "The Simcoe County District School Board would certainly entertain a partnership of this nature, i.e. a concept of a shared library, but not on a north site because of the cost concerns of a north site, and more importantly, our safety concerns would not be addressed with this concept." I think what we're hearing, what I'm hearing from you, members of council, is you're not compelled by the safety concerns, and the cost concerns, I think it's important to state, the shared library concept allows the potential for those cost concerns to be mitigated. The point of this was to say, can we take the school library that will be in that new secondary school, have it open for community use, and partner with the school board on the cost of that library? And I would remind members of council, we have funds identified in our development charges background study for a branch library in the Hewitts Secondary Plan. Now, there's a long way to go before it would be clear whether this would be a Berry public library or a school board facility that has joint use. There is a model in Angus. I understand it may or may not work here in Berry, but it is something that, obviously, the board, the concept of a shared library, have done before, and to be fair, in their letter, they're open to. The issue is, I guess, it remains the basic issue that we started with, which is not willing to move the school to the north end of the site. Council clearly tonight is not willing to approve the site plan as it is, so it is to us at this point. We can vote for the council, the motion that was deferred, which denies the site plan, or we can provide other direction to our staff to say it's the north site or nothing, or, you know, you can do anything else. But I guess I would suggest to you that if we vote the site plan down, there is no... Well, let me ask that as a question of process to Mr. Naylor, because I should, we should have absolute clarity on this. If the site plan was denied, and the board returned to the city prior to the OMB with an acceptable site plan, what happens?
Your worship and members of council, if council took the action and denied the site plan, and then a reasonable solution appeared that you were in favor of, you could pass that as direction, and then we could take it as a resolution back to the board, to the board for confirmation of the order. So there is a mechanism in a way that a council resolution with the school board can be taken through the board.
Sorry, to the board, by which you mean the Ontario Municipal Board?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Questions or comments further, Counsel Ainsworth?
Thank you, your worship. I've been reading silent on this, but I must say that I can hardly believe this is happening. I'm appalled by it, as a taxpayer, never mind being a counselor. This is all public money, building public buildings, and now you're going to sue the taxpayers to get to just to provide a... I just find it just appalling, and I have lost a lot of respect here for public boards that would treat taxpayers this way, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Ainsworth. Okay. I know emotions are running high on this, but we do need to try and keep that out of the discussion as much as possible. I appreciate your concerns, though, Counsel Ainsworth. Are there any other comments at this point, members of council? Or I'm going to call the question on the motion that's on the floor. Question? Yeah, you can ask a question. Yeah, you've had your comment, and then a reported vote's been requested by Counsel Ward, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I guess through you to Mr. Naylor, just in regard to sort of a bird's eye view of the site, spacing-wise, I know there was a field that was designated, what was going to be an active field, and there was sort of the extra space that would have been maybe a future field. Has anybody figured out the modeling on the footprints of how a library in conjunction with the high school proposal would have worked? And the reason why I ask the question is, you made a comment, Mayor Lehman, with regard to sort of cost mitigation, and I was actually curious, sort of by way of a part B to the question, of what kind of cost sharing might we anticipate if it was a library versus how firm are we on recreation facility, like a sportsplex, where there might be further cost-sharing ability with gymnasium and locker room facilities, et cetera?
Through you, your worship, to Counsel Con. With respect to your first question, Counsel Con, the staff, as shown in the memo, has produced a very rough concept of the, of a revised school located in the north and with a joint use library. It is rough, but we do feel that it could accommodate both fields as anticipated and proposed by the school board.
And if I may, Mayor Lehman, just furthermore, further that, if we were to have swapped out a library for a recreation facility, how much more space would have been required? And is there a way for us, maybe not tonight, but by way of memo, would we be able to sort of anticipate what savings might be further increased if we were in a position to be able to swap out a library with a recreation facility?
Through you, your worship. Do you mean cost savings to the board? Because we haven't certainly gone that far, and I wouldn't know what the area specifically would be required for the school, for the, sorry, for the library vis-à-vis for a gymnasium. We could look into that and provide you through memo as best we can an estimate, but we don't have that information here tonight.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you further. I think just for the sake of knowledge, I think it'd be interesting, again, I know you've got preliminary plans on locations identified in the secondary plan for where recreation facilities were to go, and I just want to get a, sort of make sure that I do an overlay in my own head as to proximity.
So just before you take the recorded vote, Madam Clerk, Counsel McCann reminded me that the other partnership or collaboration that was offered was that the city could work to maintain the sports fields, which we understand we can do at pretty reasonable cost, given the work that's already done in the area on playing fields in the southeast section of the city. But just so that it's clear going forward for those watching at home and subsequently, the notion with this library option was that by sharing the cost of the library, we would reduce in some way the cost of that piece of the project to the board, which would offset at least some of the cost. I don't know how the numbers would play out, but they would offset at least some of the cost of the redesign that is now required because they are so far along in the process. So that was the notion, and I suppose before the recorded vote is called, I would say I will remain, I will remain open to that, even if we end up with denying the site plan. If that comes forward, I hope we can make that happen and frankly avoid a costly and time-consuming OMB hearing. Madam Clerk, a recorded vote's been requested.
Good evening. We're starting with Counsel Ramita on the motion that is the deferred business, which is to deny the application as presented. Counsel Ramita?
I'll deny it.
Counsel Shipley?
Yes.
Counsel Ward?
Yes.
Counsel Silvera?
Yes.
Counsel Prouse?
Yes.
Counsel Con?
Yes.
Counsel Morales?
Yes.
Counsel McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Lehman?
Yes.
Counsel Ainsworth?
Yes.
Motion's carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much, members of council and staff. It has been a lot of work. It's frustrating that it came to this, but I want to thank staff for their work and on attempting to reach a solution. We'll move now to direct motion.